That's my favorite part of the night. Well, actually, it's my second favorite. The favorite is at the end when I do it. Hi, welcome to Plimpton's annual town meeting. There being a quorum present and having been advised by town clerk that the warrant has been properly served, this town meeting is now open. I'm your moderator, Barry DiChristofano, 198 Main Street. Thank you for coming tonight. I'll briefly go over how tonight's meeting will run. If you want to speak to an article, you'll come up to the microphone and wait to be recognized by the moderator. And no more than maybe two people in line at a time, please. At this moment, I'd like everyone to rise and observe a moment of silence for those neighbors of ours who have passed away since the last meeting, especially those who had roles as town officers: David Batchhelder, David Chandler, Patricia Harlfinger, Pauline Matheson, James Muscataris, and Harry Weichel Jr. Thank you, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the 1996 America and to the republic which stands on Main Street and on Capitol, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Principal Peter Veneto and all the custodial staff for setting up the room tonight. Tonight, we'll be holding both our annual town meeting and a special town meeting tonight. Now, the annual town meeting addresses the coming fiscal year, 2025, the one that starts on July 1st. Then, or maybe a little after 8:00 PM, we'll recess the annual town meeting and begin a special town meeting. That special town meeting will address the funding issues for this current spending year, 2024. You should all have received a copy of the town meeting warrant or picked one up when you checked in, and I hope you've had a chance to review it. Tonight's meeting is being taped for broadcast by Area 58 Community Access Media. Please take a moment, take out your phones, silence them, check them. I know you silenced it before you came in. Take it out and check it again, please. Thank you. Present tonight, guests of characters, on your right is the Board of Selectmen, Chairperson -- oh, nope, we'll start with John Traynor, Mark Russo, Chairman Christine Joy, our Town Administrator Liz Dennehy, Town Council Greg Corbo, and interim Town Clerk Tara Shaw. On your left is your Finance Committee: Marilyn Brown, Chairman Catherine Shepard, Nate Sides, Steve Lewis, and Michael Lemieux, as well as our Town Accountant Lisa Hart. The tellers and counters for this evening are Nancy Butler, Nancy Magnuson, and Madeline Pompey, and our Peace Officer tonight is Officer Tim Johnson. Several of our officials are not residents of the town and, as such, need your permission to address the Assembly here. I will entertain a motion that the following -- I will entertain a motion to allow that the following individuals can participate tonight when and if appropriate: our Town Administrator Elizabeth Dennehy, Town Council Greg Corbo, Town Treasurer/Collector Christine Kelly, our Police Chief Matthew All, Assistant Assessor Holly Murray, Library Director Michael Slosson, Lieutenant Principal Peter Veneto, and from the Silver Lake Regional School Superintendent Jill Prue and Director of Business Services Sarah Hickey, and also Lieutenant Dan Hoffman. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
One second. Any discussion or comment about that? Seeing no hands. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Down, opposed? Unanimous. Are there any people in the audience tonight who are not registered voters in Plimpton and are not sitting in these first two rows? I'm going to trust you on that one. Okay, thank you. If you are not a registered voter, you need to be up here. Okay, procedural rule for tonight: anyone wishing to speak needs to stand at the microphone and no more than two people behind them, I've covered that. After being recognized by me, state your name and your full street address, house number and street, before you begin your questions and comments. That helps us all to get to know one another better. Please direct all your comments through me, the moderator, and I will then direct your comment or question to the appropriate person or board. I will not entertain side discussions. It's got to come through the podium here. Article sponsors will be allowed up to three minutes for a presentation. Speakers from the floor will be allowed up to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak a second time on the same article will need to wait till everyone who wants to speak once gets a chance to do so once. And if you're going to speak a second time, you must be bringing something new to the discussion, not rehashing what's already been said. All right. To some couple rules about the articles: if you're proposing any substantial amendment, they must be submitted in writing. And finally, we've come here as friends, neighbors, we'll still be neighbors when we leave. Please have civility and respect for all speakers to maintain our Plimpton community. Thank you. Onto Article 1. Article 1: to hear reports of the town officers and act thereon, and to receive and act upon reports of any committees and give authority or instructions or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
One second. Moved in second, third. Comment? You cannot hear. Can -- since this doesn't go up any higher and I can't shrink, can I? Oh, you couldn't hear Christine, oh.
I've never heard that before. All right. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Okay, so, and we didn't have any discussion. All in favor of Article 1? Downhand, sorry, I shouldn't do that. All opposed? Unanimous. I will make a comment to think about next year for you, other committees. I know you put things -- some committees put things in the town report, but if you don't have something in there, I'm really going to press you to get up next year and give a report to the people that you're working for, okay? Article 2: to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements for FY 2025 as permitted by and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
One second. The article's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All in favor of Article 2 as printed, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed? Article 3: to see if the town will vote to amend the Wage and Personnel Classification Plan effective 1 July 2024, and to pay wages as -- pay as wages to following sums or take any other action relative thereto. Now, what I will do is I will take this kind of by department, so I will read like the different lines in the Highway Department. If you have a problem with one of those or a comment, just yell out "hold," and when I'm done with the whole department, we'll come back to you and we'll see what that was about. Highway Department: Proposed bottom range for Highway Superintendent. From $76,196.99 to $99,414.35. Working foreman: $25.96 to $33.86. Motor equipment repairman: $25.39 to $33.01. Equipment operator: $23.70 to $30.75. Truck driver laborer: $23.36 to $30.47. Seeing no -- hearing no holds on that. All those in favor of passing those top five in the Highway Department, please raise your right hand. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed not having a motion. I was talking to myself. Do I have a motion? For all of Article 3, we'll take the motion. Second?
Second.
Okay. Into the discussion, I read off those lines. There were no holds. All in favor of the Highway Department lines as read, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed? Unanimous. Glad somebody's keeping me in check. Clerical workers, election workers. Senior clerk and warden: $1,580 to $2060. And constable: $1,580 to $2060. All in favor of clerical/election workers section, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? Unanimous. Elder affairs. Director of elder affairs: $18,937.07 to $24,618.18. Senior aide: $26,856.54 to $34,981.21. Hearing no holds. All in favor of elder affairs section, raise your right hands, please. Downhands opposed? Up, one opposed, not unanimous. Library. Library director: $56,421.32 to $73,347.71. Senior library technician: $22.86 to $29.62. Circulation assistant: $16.92 to $22.01. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the library wage -- proposed wages, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed? Not unanimous. Police other. Special police officer: $22.37. Police matron: $21.09. No holds. All favor of police other, raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? Not unanimous. Professional. Land use coordinator: $25.11 to $32.72. Assistant assessor: $33.86 to $44. Administrative assessor: $23.93 to $31.04. Health agent: $41.76 to $54.16. Conservation agent: $33.86 to $56.42. Hearing no holds. All in favor, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? Town hall support. Assistant town accountant: $23.93 to $31.02. Assistant town clerk: $23.93 to $31.02. Assistant treasurer/collector: $23.93 to $31.02. Administrative assistant: $23.36 to $30.47. Senior clerk: $20.42 to $26.52. And clerk: $15.80 to $20.60. Hearing no holds. All in favor of that section, raise your right hands, please. Downhands opposed? One opposed. Not unanimous. Town labor. Senior disposal attendant: $18 -- I'm sorry, $19.88 to $25.79. Disposal attendant: $18.54 to $24.18. Town custodian: $18.17 to $23.64. And laborer: $18.17 to $23.64. Hearing no holds. All in favor of town labor section, right hands. Downhands opposed? Last but definitely not least, our veterans agent. It's a stipend of $10,000 -- $10,048.91. All in favor, raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? Well, we just voted and closed the article. It's done. What's your question, Steve? Yeah, they're no longer under wage and personnel now that they're unioned. And Steve, you really shouldn't have come up here. I'll let you get away with that one because the article is over. I don't invite you, you just get up and stand there. I'll invite you to speak. Okay. Article 4: to see if the town will fix the compensation of elected officers and to see what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate, including appropriations from available funds or borrow to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the ensuing year, or take any other action relative thereto. Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. The article's been moved in seconded. Now, for this, you'll go to the back of your warrant, to this nice table from Finance Committee, with all of our lines. And this is going to proceed in the same way we did with wage and personnel recommendations. I will take it section by a time, read each line in the section, and what the number I'll be reading is the town meeting budget as recommended by your Finance Committee. That's what we'll be voting on. Line 10, insurance premiums: $165,760. Line 15, county pension: $796,996. Group health: $574,000. Medicare: $100,000. Unemployment: $10,000. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the total insurance and pension group as recommended by Finance Committee, raise your right hands, please. Downhands, all opposed? Second section is general government. Reserved: $500. Oh, I'm sorry, reserved, nothing. Board of Appeals: $500. Thank you. Conservation Commission: $3,150. Conservation agent: $36,282. Open space: $2,000. Web and IT services: $7,256. Council on Aging: $5,700. Council on Aging Director stipend: $25,052. Council on Aging Support Staff: $38,072. Finance Committee: $1,000. Historical Commission: $500. Moderator's salary: $200. Planning Board: $5,709. Recreation Committee: $10,250. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the general government budget as recommended by FinCom, raise your right hands, please. Passes. Assessors. Assessors' salaries: $3. Assistant assessor: $41,343. Certification compensation: $1,000. Assessors' support staff: $23,260. Assessors' expense: $25,654. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the assessor section, raise your right hands, please. Downhands opposed? Town clerk office. Town clerk's salary: $58,341. Certification compensation: $1,000. Town clerk's support staff: $31,371. Town clerk's expense: $8,019. Election and registration: $7,170. Election support staff: $19,430. Hearing no holds. All in favor of town clerk section, raise your right hands, please. Downhands opposed? Excuse me. By now, you think I know where to bring a shelf to hang off of this thing. Next section is the Accountant and Tax and Treasurer's office. Accountant/auditor contract: $71,250. Reserved as nothing. Accountant expenses: $10,000. Treasurer/tax collector contract: $87,650. Certification compensation: $1,500. Treasurer support staff: $45,345. Treasurer/tax collector expenses: $41,700. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the total for the Accountant and Tax and Treasurer's office, raise your right hand. Downhands, all opposed, raise your hands, please. It passes. Selectmen's office. Selectmen's stipend: $3. Selectmen administration assistant: $44,532. Selectmen expenses: $9,500. Town administrator contract: $141,111. Town administrator expenses: $5,100. Computers and technology maintenance: $30,000. Memorial Day: $625. Town buildings: $6,500. Building supplies: $5,800. Town custodial services: $29,312. Custodial emergency and special projects: $2,094. Town council: $75,000. Town reports: $1,200. And utilities: $55,000. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the selectmen section, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? It passes. Board of Health. The health stipend: $3. Health support staff: $49,252. And the health expenses: $3,047. Hearing no holds. All in favor, Board of Health section, raise your right hands, please. Downhands opposed? Public Works. Highway superintendent: $93,914. Public Works administrative assistant: $22,660. Highway, parks, grounds labor: $250,880. General Highway: $101,640. Equipment and maintenance: $8,000. Cemetery department: $3,515. Reserved as nothing. Snow and ice: $65,000. Transfer station: $139,75. Transfer station staff: $57,553. Hearing no holds. Total public works budget, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? It passes. All right. Next section is the protection of personal property. Animal inspector: $3,500. The two reserved lines are zeros. Tree warden salary: $11,986. Tree warden expense: $10,775. And the PWS well-monitoring is $10,000. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the personal property protection section, raise your right hands, please. Downhands opposed? It passes. Building Department. Building inspector: $22,000. Department administrative assistant: $35,004. Plumbing and gas inspector: $12,000. Wiring inspector: $18,000. Zoning enforcement: $21,218. And department expenses: $1,800. There are no holds. All in favor of the building department budget, raise your right hands, please. Downhands opposed? Fire and EMS services. Excuse me. Fire chief contract: $128,750. Fire clerical assistants: $12,195. Fire EMS expenses: $86,750. EMS medical supplies: $20,000. Fire EMS salaries: $819,75. Fire EMS equipment and repair: $20,000. Fire building utilities: $20,085. Fire vehicle maintenance: $29,000. And there's a hold on line 510, fire EMS salaries. You made the hold, eight?
I move the article to the location appropriate, so $1,767,000. Transfer from the end of the document, so $2,000,000. Transfer from the past, so $3,000,000. For total of $5,000,075,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrell. So just to clarify, so you know what that's about. Our accountant put a hold on it. Everything to this point has come out of raise and appropriate funding. The accountant put a hold on so that she could divide up where that $819,75 is coming from, and she cited three different sources that we're taking it from. So first, we'll have, is there any discussion on the modification proposed by the town accountant? One second. Okay, so it's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay. In that case, now we're ready to -- all in favor of the modification as made by the town accountant, let's vote on that. Please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? It passes. Now, we're voting on the section in its entirety for the recommended values as printed in your warrant. All in favor of the fire EMS services budget as printed, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? It passes. Police services. Police chief contract: $132,311. Police salaries: $1,211,081. Police administrative assistant/executive information coordinator: $53,582. DARE: $1,000. Police services expenses: $123,635. Police station utilities: $40,942. Motor vehicles: $57,550. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the police services budget as recommended by FinCom, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? It passes. Emergency dispatch. Emergency dispatch services: $200,000. All in favor of emergency dispatch section, raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? It passes. Veterans section. Veterans agent: $9,926. Veterans administration: $850. Veterans benefits: $45,000. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the total recommended funding for the veterans section, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? We move on to the library. Library director: $68,000. Library support staff: $48,099. Library expenses: $63,048. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the library budget section, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? Unanimous. No, I'm sorry. I missed that. Okay, I apologize. Well, I got people here, keep me honest. Passes. It passes. Passes, it passes. Local School, Elementary School Costs, three million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Hearing no hold, all in favor of local school budget, raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, unanimous. Regional Schools. Our Regional School Assessment, three million one hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Debt and Interest for the Regional School, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand eighty. Hearing no holds, all in favor of the Regional Schools Budget, raise your right hands, please. And down hands, opposed, it passes. Okay, now we're down to Reserve Fund Interest, Principal and Debt Exclusion. Reserve Fund, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Interest Loans and Refunds, three thousand. Principal and Interest, nothing. Debt Exclusion, fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and nineteen. Police Station Debt, one hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred. And so there's a hold on line eight hundred and twenty-five, Police Station Debt. Yes, Mrs. Hart?
I move that the town vote, transfer from Capital Stabilization, the sum of one hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred dollars for line eight twenty-five, Police Station Debt.
Okay, so again, this was a hold put on, and we've made a motion to do that, and it's been seconded. So here, we're just taking the motion to modify this, it's just that it's coming out of the Capital Stabilization Fund as opposed to raising appropriate. Any discussion on that funding source? Seeing no, seeing no hands, we'll vote on that modification first to take the line eight hundred and twenty-five from Capital Stabilization, all in favor, raise your right hands, please. Down hands opposed, that's unanimous. Now we're writing, that takes care of the hold, now we're voting on the entire section as-
You need two-thirds for that special stabilization.
Yeah, but nobody, it was unanimous.
Oh, that just, okay, I guess that was just on modification.
Yep. Right. Two-thirds. Oh, I'll fill in the jar. Okay, yeah, so I didn't have that in my notes of needing anything different. That's it, that's Article Four. You did it, gang. Wait, we didn't vote the last section?
No.
We didn't do it, folks. Who said you did? Okay, the final section, Reserve Fund Interest and Loans, Principal and Interest, Debt Exclusion, and Police Station Debt as recommended by FinCom with that one funding source modified, all in favor, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, unanimous. Now you did it, folks. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from the Community Preservation Estimated Annual Revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects and other expenses in fiscal year 2025, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. The appropriations are: From the fiscal year 2025 estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, five thousand dollars. Reserves, from FY 2025 estimated revenues for Historic Resources Reserve, ten thousand dollars. From the FY 2025 estimated revenues for Community Housing Reserve, ten thousand dollars. From the FY 2025 estimated revenues for Open Space Reserve, ten thousand dollars. And from the FY 2025 estimated revenues for Budgeted Reserve, sixty-five thousand, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
A second. Article Five has been moved and seconded as printed, is there any discussion or comments or questions about Article Five? All in favor of Article Five as printed and read and moved and seconded, raise your right hands, please. Down hands opposed, that is unanimous. Article Six. To see if the town will vote to transfer sixty thousand five hundred dollars, of which sixty thousand will come from the Historic Resources Reserve of the Community Preservation Fund, and five hundred dollars from the undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund, to be used by the Plimpton Town Properties Committee as described in an application submitted to the Plimpton Community Preservation Committee. Said funds to be used to design and begin the restoration of the front entrance of the townhouse in a historically appropriate manner, and all work incidental or related thereto. Said project to be directed and supervised by the Plimpton Town Properties Committee, with reporting for oversight purposes to the Plimpton Community Preservation Committee not less than every two months, and at the completion of the project, any remaining funds to be returned to the budgeted reserve of the Community Preservation Fund by vote of the Plimpton Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article Six has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions for clarification?
Mr. Moderator, John Wilhampson, 255 Main Street, and Chair of the Town Properties Committee.
Excuse me just a second. Can anyone hear him well in the back? Okay, no? Can you tweak this mic a little bit, please?
Well, why don't I talk louder just for now, so that we don't have to wait for that? Just to clarify what we're doing with this article, so that folks understand, we're looking to replace the front door of the townhouse. Everyone says, well, the door is fine, because no one goes through the front door, but the door is on its last legs, we're going to do a historically appropriate replacement of that door with a new wooden door that will fit in that. We'll also do a full restoration of the surround of that door and repair immediately inside the door. There'll also be some hazardous waste removal of the tiles that have asbestos in them there. Long story short, the door will actually be operational again, because right now, I think if you open it, it will never shut again. So this is a project that we're pretty excited about, I think it will, one, it will allow the heat to stay in the townhouse, and should end up with a much nicer look from the road, too.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Wilhampson. Any other comments or questions about this? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Six as printed, Article Six as printed in your warrant, raise your right hands, please. Down hands opposed, it passes. And I should say, these are all simple majority votes unless I say otherwise, or Town Council, correct me. Article Seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty-eight thousand dollars to conduct financial audits for fiscal year 2025, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article has been moved and seconded with the funding source coming from free cash. Is there any comment? Questions? Questions? No. All in favor of Article Seven, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed? Is it, do we have an opposed or not? I couldn't quite tell, in fact, yeah. It's unanimous. Article Eight. And so I should have said at the beginning, I meant to, I've said this before, generally when I look at the warrant, there's like three chunks to it, right? There's the budget, and then there's a lot of like housekeeping, there are commitments that we've already made in past years that we need to deal with, loans and contracts and things like that, and then there's some bylaw stuff. This is one of that middle grouping. Article Eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-two, to make annual lease payments as part of the lease purchase programs previously authorized, as shown below, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Ma-
I was going to read the number first.
Okay, go ahead, do you want to read that off?
Thank you. Townwide Fiber Optic Buildout Equipment, twenty-two thousand. Highway Department Truck, seventeen thousand four sixty-two. Public Safety Radios Lease Package, twenty-seven thousand five hundred. Police Vehicle Lease, thirteen thousand four seventy, and Police Tasers Lease Package, eighteen thousand four fifty.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of capital stabilization.
Article Eight has been moved and seconded, it's still just majority, right? Article has been moved and seconded as printed in your warrant, please, any comments or All in favor of Article Eight, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, it passes. Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to repurpose the unexpendited balance of funds in the amount of three thousand five hundred and eighty-eight cents appropriated pursuant to Article Twenty-one at the May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one annual town meeting, for the purpose of providing matching funds for the 2022 FEMA AFG grant for the replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus, a CBA, and compliant public safety portable radios, by making the funds available for the fire department to utilize as matching funds for the 2024 FEMA AFG grant, and to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the additional sum of four thousand forty-two dollars to equal the required five percent match for the 2024 anticipated award of the FEMA AFG grant for communications equipment replacement for the fire department, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action
Cheryl Duddy, thirty-four Maple Street, Fire Chief.
Please second chief, can you hear her back there?
No.
Please speak into the mic more, chief.
I'm not as tall as John.
Thank you.
Cheryl Duddy, thirty-four Maple Street, Fire Department. I move this article as printed as a warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article has been moved and seconded, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, so a point of clarification, the AFG grant requires a match. We did not receive the grant in 2022, so we're taking the funding that we had set aside and raising more funds. The grant is to replace our portable radios, and it's for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, so this money will just be our portion of the match.
Thank you, chief. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor of Article Nine, please, Article Nine, yeah, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, it passes. Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be added to the Town Building and Maintenance Emergency Article, as voted pursuant to Article Four at the June seventeenth, 2020 special town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article Ten has been moved and seconded with the funding source of free cash, is there any discussion or comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Ten as printed with the funding source of free cash, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, it is unanimous. Article Eleven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of seven thousand dollars to be added to the Information Technology and Equipment Article, as voted pursuant to Article Thirty at the May eighteenth, 2022 annual town meeting, for the purchase and installation of information technology equipment, including upgrading outdated security software and hardware and equipment, including anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article Eleven has been moved and seconded with the funding source of free cash, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eleven, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, unanimous. Article Twelve. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of one thousand one hundred dollars to be added to the Recruitment for Management Positions slash Human Resources Article, as voted pursuant to Article Seven at the May twelfth, 2021 special town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article Twelve has been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Twelve, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, it passes. Thank you, down hands. Article Thirteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of nine thousand dollars to be added to the General Consultant and Preliminary Design Services Article, as voted pursuant to Article Twenty-sixth at the May twelfth, 2021 annual town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article Thirteen has been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash, any discussion, questions, comments, concern? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Thirteen, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, it passes. I know this kind of seems boring, we're doing the same thing article to article, but it's really important that you're all here doing it, so thank you. It's the only way it gets done, you're the legislative body of the town. Article Fourteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of ten thousand dollars for infrastructure improvements and program maintenance projects at the town's recreational fields and facilities, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article Fourteen has been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash, is there any discussion? Questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article Fourteen, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, unanimous. Article Fifteen. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for road construction, resurfacing and top coating, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, or take any other action
Mr. Moderator, Rob Farlot, ninety-three Maple Street, Highway Superintendent.
Mr. Rob, can you hear him in the back? Please speak into the mic more, Rob.
I apologize, I mumble. Rob Farlot, ninety-three Maple Street, Highway Superintendent. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article Fifteen has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion, questions? All in favor of Article Fifteen, please raise your right hands. Down hands opposed, unanimous. All right, these next ones are going to, are a question about authorizing the town to go into lease or purchase agreements, so these are going to require two-thirds votes. Article Sixteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Highway Department to enter into a lease purchase agreement in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty-one C, for a period in excess of three years to lease and purchase and to fully equip a new Ford One-Fifty or similar vehicle, and to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the first-year payment on said lease purchase agreement, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator- Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with the first-year payment for said lease-purchase agreement to be funded from existing grant funds.
Article sixteen has been moved and seconded with the money for the first-year payment to come from existing grant funds. Is there any discussion or questions or comments about this? Seeing none, this will require a two-thirds vote of those voting. If you're in favor of Article sixteen, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed. Was there no opposed? It's unanimous. Article seventeen, this will also be a two-thirds vote required. To see if the town will vote to authorize the police department to enter into a lease-purchase agreement in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C, for a period in excess of three years to lease and purchase and to fully equip a patrol, a police patrol vehicle as part of the department's replacement schedule, and to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the first-year payment on said lease-purchase agreement, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with the first-year payment for said lease-purchase agreement to be funded from existing grant funds.
Thank you. Article seventeen has been moved and seconded with the funding source of the first-year payment to come from existing grant funds. Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of Article, two-thirds vote we'll need again. All in favor of Article seventeen, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed, it passes. Okay, it passes with the two-thirds, there was more than a two-thirds. Thank you. Article eighteen. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter fifty of the Town Code revolving funds by adding a new row to Section fifty-six to create a new police vehicle revolving fund as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. So this new line is going to be a revolving fund for a police cruiser. The spending authority out of the fund is the police chief. The source of revenue to go into the fund are fees paid by private parties for police details. The fund will be used to offset the costs of maintaining, making lease payments, and purchasing and equipping vehicles for the police department with a spending limit of that fund of sixty thousand dollars.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article eighteen has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions or comments or anything? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article nineteen, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed, it passes. Excuse me a moment. Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars for continued bylaw codification and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant with a funding source of free cash.
Article nineteen has been moved and seconded with a funding source of free cash. Is there any discussion, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of Article nineteen, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed, unanimous. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of nine thousand dollars for the purpose of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five real and personal property interim valuation of the town, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Ethan Stiles, eighty-five West Street, member of the Plimpton Board of Assessors. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
We need a funding source for that.
The funding source to be designated is free cash.
Thank you. Article twenty has been moved and seconded with the funding source of free cash. Does anybody have any comments or questions or anything? All in favor of Article twenty, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed, unanimous. So the good news is, in a couple minutes, five minutes, we're going to break for the special town meeting, where you get to do the same thing, but it's in a different meeting. Article twenty-one. Execution of solar pilot agreement with Ring Road Solar LLC. To see if the town will vote to approve the solar pilot agreement with Ring Road Solar LLC, one-fifty-five Fettle Street, Suite seven hundred, Boston, Massachusetts, zero-two-one-one-zero, for a solar facility located on Plimpton Assessor's Map Eight, Lot one dash one, and Map Eight, Lot two dash twenty-nine respectively, pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause the forty-fifth, as amended by Section sixty-one of Chapter eight of the Acts of twenty-twenty-one, and to authorize Town and Plimpton Board of Selectmen, the Town of Plimpton Board of Assessors, and the Town Administrator of the Town of Plimpton collectively as the quote "authorized officer" end quote to execute said solar pilot agreement on behalf of the town, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Ethan Stiles, eighty-five West Street. I move that the, that the article be approved as printed in the warrant.
Article twenty-one has been moved and seconded. Did you wish to say something, Mr. Stiles?
Yes, this article we had before the, the meeting last year. However, we passed it over, and it was not ripe at this time. So this is essentially the same pilot agreement that was passed over last year. However, this year, it is in a position to be approved, and I ask that the meeting do so. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Any other discussion or questions about this? All in favor of Article twenty-one as moved and seconded, please raise your right hands. You're jumping ahead of me. Downhands opposed, it passes. We're going to get one more in here before eight o'clock, according to my clock. All right, this is going to require a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow the sum of up to nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for the engineering design, preparation of plan sets, and all necessary bid documents, coordination and bidding of the project for the construction of a new fire station, including incidental or necessary costs to facilitate said project. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any such documents and/or agreements necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote, or take any other action relative thereto. Article twenty-two has been moved and seconded, and I think we're going to have a.
Mr. Moderator, I would ask for funding source.
Okay. You made the motion, do you have funding source for this?
The funding source is going to be existing funds currently in the fire station.
So there won't be any borrowing?
It's borrowing, but the, the funding source to pay.
So we're looking to.
Yeah, the funding source is.
Funding source is borrowing, then.
The funding source is borrowing.
So not raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds? Because that is in this.
Right, or, or it says, or borrow, so we're going to be borrowing.
So we have to say which one, so it's just borrowing. Thank you.
Okay.
John Wilhamsen, two-fifty-five Main Street, Chair of Plimpton Town Properties. Our existing fire station was built over fifty years ago to house a small call fire department. Since that time, we have seen the department grow and adapt to meet current demands and needs of our town. The size of fire apparatus have nearly doubled in the last fifty years, partially to address the fact that firefighters are no longer permitted to ride on the outside of vehicles. And since these apparatus carry water, foam, and/or medicines, they are required to be kept in a climate-controlled environment. When fighting fires today, our firefighters are presented with significantly more complex hazards than they were fifty years ago. The wide variety of materials that they are exposed to greatly increases the need for cleaning of their gear and themselves post-event, and the space to safely do it in. We simply do not have that space in the current building. Today, unlike fifty years ago, we have a comprehensive EMS, advanced life support service, with two ambulances that require climate-controlled storage. Approval of this article will allow the town to borrow funds to proceed with the development of complete design and construction documents, bid documents, and site testing for a purpose-built, multi-bay, up-to-code, safe and modern facility. It will also allow us to solicit actual bids for a new station so that we can be as accurate as possible in what the cost of construction will be. This facility will provide for essential administrative and personnel space that will promote the safety, security, and health of our fire and EMS personnel and station visitors, while also providing necessary space for maintaining and storing our fire apparatus, equipment, and supplies. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhamsen. Article twenty-two is moved and seconded to borrow the sum of money cited in there. And since it's borrowing, it'll need a two-thirds vote, but before we get to a vote, is there any discussion or questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of Article twenty-two as moved and seconded, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed, it's a two-thirds majority. Okay, let's, we're going to start the special town meeting after we take a five-minute break. All right, now for something completely different. So everything we've been talking about so far has been for the coming fiscal year that starts in July. You should now be looking at the special town meeting warrant, which was part of the package. And there are two articles that we have to look at, and these both deal with the current fiscal year that ends June thirtieth. Thank you. Article one. To see if the town will vote to transfer seventy thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Fund to be used by the Plimpton Recreation Commission as described in an application submitted to the Plimpton Community Preservation Committee, said funds to be used, said funds to be used to purchase and install lighting and upgrade ball fields and all work incidental or related thereto, said project to be directed and supervised by the Plimpton Recreation Commission with reporting for oversight purposes to the Plimpton Community Preservation Committee not less than every two months or sooner, as may be requested. And further, that any funds remaining shall be returned to the Community Preservation Fund by vote of the Plimpton Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant. Article one has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or comment or explanation or anything anybody wants to say about this?
Mr. Moderator, Mark Riley, one-fifty-one Palmer Road, sit on the Recreation Commission. Just to clarify, this is not just the ball fields, this is kind of a three-pronged approach. The lights are definitely going in to extend the day in the season for playing ball in the fields. Ultimately, there'll be a walking path, that'll be a hard surface, asphalt or whatever the town determines, for, it'd be wheelchair, stroller accessible, easy access. And we'll be updating the playing surfaces and reorienting the small field. And when that small field is done, it'll be set up for summer movies, music series, and if we ever get winter again, an ice skating rink.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of Article one of the special town meeting warrant, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed, please raise your hands. Unanimous. Article two. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum or sums of money to be used to supplement the elementary school cost budget line, line seven hundred, and/or to fund deficits in any other budget lines as voted pursuant to Article four at the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting for the remainder of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Frazier, Chair of the Plimpton School Committee, sixty-six Maple Street. I actually have a motion in two parts. Would you like me to separate the two parts for you tonight?
That's what we're going to do, yeah, yes, please.
Okay. So I would make a motion to transfer from the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting budget line seven hundred, elementary school line, the sum of eighty-seven thousand dollars to the special education line, budget line seven oh five, in the FY twenty-twenty-four budget as voted pursuant to Article four in the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting.
Okay, so let me just explain what we're doing procedurally here to everybody. Okay, so Mr. Frazier is moving Article two in two pieces, because we're going to have different funding sources for this. And this first part is to transfer eighty-seven thousand from special ed line budget from the current year budget.
From the general ed line to the special ed line?
And this will just require a majority vote when we get to it. Do you want to say anything more about it?
These funds are available to us because the Plimpton School Committee in February was alerted to a budget deficit appearing in this line of our budget, so we froze the entire budget. And we were able to accumulate eighty-seven thousand dollars in excess funds to help us fund the deficit in special ed.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments about this first part of the article? All right, seeing no one, we'll vote on this first part of the article as moved and seconded, and it's just a simple majority vote. All in favor, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from the general stabilization fund the sum of one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars to the special education line, budget line seven oh five, in the FY twenty-twenty-four budget as voted pursuant to the Article four at the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting.
Okay, part two of Article two has been moved and seconded. Now, since this is going to, this part of the article requires the funding to come from general stabilization, we'll need a two-thirds vote when we get around to doing that. Anything else you want to say about it?
Just wanted to remind everyone, in this budget year, the Plimpton School Committee is responsible for all special ed students who receive out-of-district services from age two-point-nine to age twenty-two years of age. This deficit that we encumbered was due to two things. One, the state of Massachusetts allowed out-of-district special ed schools to increase their tuition by fourteen-point-six-nine percent this fiscal year. And we had some students that needed services that we did not anticipate when we came before the legislative body last town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Any other thoughts or comments, questions? Yeah, so this part two of the motion is to move, it's been moved to transfer from general stabilization the sum of one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars to the special education line, budget line seven oh five, in the twenty, in the FY twenty-twenty-four budget as voted pursuant to Article four at the May seventeen, twenty-twenty-three annual town meeting. What else, anyone else want clarification? Seeing none, all in favor of part two of Article two, this will require a two-thirds vote, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed, unanimous. That ends the special town meeting, adjourned. Oh, I have a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn the special town meeting. All in favor, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed, that's unanimous. Now we're going back to the town meeting, the annual town meeting. And we stopped after Article twenty-two. And we stopped after Article 22. So now Article 23 will be picking up, which is on page seven of your annual town meeting To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, eminent domain, upon such terms and conditions as the selectmen deem appropriate, permanent and temporary easements in the lands within, adjacent to, and/or contiguous to the Winnetoxet Road, in the locations more or less depicted on a plan entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Plan and Profile of the Winnetoxet, Bridge Number P14001, Sen., in the town of Plimpton, Plymouth County, preliminary rate of way plans dated 1/16/2024, a 100% submission, as it may be amended, a copy of which has been placed on file with the town clerk, and permanent and temporary easements in parcels of land located within 200 feet. Sorry about that. Shut myself off. I didn't write it. With the easements in parcels of land located within 200 feet of said parcels, as such additional areas may be shown on said plan for public way purposes, including without limitation, drainage, utility, slope grading, and construction of improvements and structures, and any other related purposes to enable the town to undertake the Winnetoxet Road Bridge Replacement Project, and anything incidental and related thereto, and further, to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, borrow or otherwise provide, a sum of money for the purpose of providing for such acquisition and paying all costs and expenses associated therewith, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements, execute any and all instruments, and take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Robert Furlot, 93 Maple Street, Highway Superintendent. I move the article, I move the article as printed in the warrant with funding from Chapter 90 grant funds.
Article 23 has been moved and seconded, thank you, with funding from Chapter 90 grant funds. Any discussion? All in favor of Article 23, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to accept and expend such sums of money allotted or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or any other state roadway reimbursement program for the fiscal year 2025, and borrow in anticipation of reimbursement such sums as may be available as the state's share of the cost of work, said Chapter 90, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Rob Furlot, 93 Maple Street, Highway Superintendent. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 24 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 24, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $15,000, to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Frazier, Silver Lake Regional School Committee, 66 Maple Street, I move the article as printed with the source of free cash funding.
Article 25 has been moved and seconded with the source of the funding to come from free cash. Any discussion, comments, questions?
Mr. Moderator, this is an annual ask from the Silver Lake Regional School Committee for the part-time school resource officer for the middle school, with a reminder that the Kingston Town does pay for a full-time school resource officer for the high school, and we share the part-time resource officer with Halifax. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 25, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. It passes. All right, now these next few, that other category I was talking about, some bylaw, either tweaks or complete changes here and there, and each of these is gonna require a report from the planning board, I mean, from the Bylaw Review Committee.
No, the planning board.
The planning board, that's what I thought the first time. The planning board prior to making it, because these are bylaw changes. Article 26, and because these are bylaw changes, they are going to require a two-thirds vote. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to amend Plimpton's zoning bylaws, Article 11, definitions, Chapter 300, Section 300-11.1, terms defined as follows. To add the following definition to 300-11.1 by inserting this new definition alphabetically into its appropriate place in the existing list of definitions. Accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling units by right and requiring site plan review are defined, are as defined in Section 300-5.10, or take any other action relative thereto.
Do you want the report first or the motion first?
I like the motion and the second first, and then we can get the report once it's on the floor, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 26 has been moved and seconded as printed.
Ann Sobuleski, 255 Main Street, Chair of the Planning Board. On May 7, the Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing to discuss this proposed article. Following a presentation of information, no public comment was received. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article to town meeting. Let me explain very briefly what this article does. We adopted in 2021 an accessory dwelling unit bylaw in the town. It allows accessory dwelling units, and that portion of the bylaw, Section 300-5.10, includes a specific definition of what is an accessory dwelling unit, both by right and by site plan review. However, the definitions section of the bylaw, the portion, the portion at the back that alphabetically lists the definition of everything, does not include this definition. So all this does is, in the definitions section, it puts a definition of accessory dwelling unit to tell people to go look at Section 300-5.10 to find the answer to any question that they may have. It's purely administrative.
Thank you, Ms. Sobuleski. Any other questions or comments? So the bylaw commute, I'll just say the Bylaw Review Committee has been scrubbing all our bylaws, and these little things are found, and that's what this is all about. Okay, seeing no other hands, this will be required a two-thirds vote, please raise your right hands in favor of Article 26. Downhands, opposed. Unanimous. Oh, two-thirds, I didn't need to say, two-thirds. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Article five, intensity of use regulations, Chapter 300, Section 300-5.0, general provisions A, as follows. To add the words, "No more than one dwelling shall be built upon any lot." Said restriction shall not prohibit accessory dwelling units created in conformity with the provisions of Section 300-5.10 immediately after the words, "No more than one dwelling shall be built on any lot," or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Articles been moved and seconded. A report from the planning board, please.
Yes, the Plimpton Plin-
Can you speak into the mic just a little harder, please?
Sorry. The Plimpton Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing on May 7 to discuss this proposed warrant article. Following a discussion of the article, public comment was solicited, no public comment was given, and the Planning Board voted unanimously in favor of recommending approval of this article at town meeting. The current bylaw includes the sentence, "No more than one dwelling unit shall be built upon any lot," at Section 300-5.0, general provisions A. Again, in 2021, when we adopted the accessory dwelling use bylaw, there is the potential that somebody could be confused and say, well, this section says no more than one dwelling unit may be built on any lot, however, the other section allows accessory dwelling units. So the purpose of this amendment is to make it abundantly clear that the restriction, "No more than, no more than one dwelling shall be built upon any lot," does not preclude people from having an accessory dwelling unit, as is previously authorized in the other sections of the bylaw. It's purely cleanup and clarification.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 28, please raise your right hands. I'm sorry, 27, downhands. I'm gonna do that over again. All in favor of Article 27, please raise your right hands. Thank you. Downhands, opposed. It passes with a two-thirds vote. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton bylaws, zoning bylaws, Article seven, special permits, Chapter 300, Section 300-7.2W, as follows. To add the words, "And mobile homes," immediately after the word "trailers" in the first sentence, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 28 has been moved and seconded as printed. Planning board report, please.
Yes, the Plimpton Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing on May 7 to discuss this article. Following our discussion, we solicited public comment, no public comment was given. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. So what this is doing, the, in the special permit section of the bylaw, there are certain issues and instances where someone can apply for a special permit, and there are requirements that enable them to get the special permit if they demonstrate that they've met all of said requirements. One of them is for a trailer. If you're going to place a trailer on your property because you have had damage to your home, it needs to be rebuilt, all of those things are currently part of the special permit requirements, but the definition there for what you can get a special permit for is just a trailer, does not include the word "mobile home." And there was a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, who has received a number of requests for special permits where it's not necessarily a trailer per se, it's more of a mobile home, and they asked to include this additional phrase in the definition of what you could get a special permit for in that section. So if you want clarity, W currently says "trailers." The Board of Appeals shall require full compliance with lot area and setback requirements of this bylaw, and such conditions deem necessary and appropriate in granting such special permits. No special permit shall be granted for a period in excess of one year. See also the requirements of Section 300-6.3. So that's the current text of this section of the bylaw. We're not changing any of that text, we're just adding the words "and mobile homes" after the word "trailers."
Thank you, Ms. Sobuleski. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, this is also a two-thirds vote required. All in favor of Article 28, for real this time, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. Two-thirds, passes. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Article seven, special permits, Chapter 300, Section 7.2N, as follows. In item N, in the first sentence, delete the words, quote, "slash tourist home," end quote, immediately after the word "guest house," or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 29 has been moved and seconded. We need a report from the planning board, please.
Yes. On May 7, the Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing to discuss this warrant article. Following discussion, public comment was solicited, no public comment was received, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. Back in 2019, when the table of uses was overhauled and modernized, the concept of a tourist home as a use was deleted from the table of uses. So you, whatever a tourist home is, which was never defined, is now no longer listed in any other location in the zoning bylaw except for here, and it should be removed so there's no confusion.
Thank you, Ms. Sobuleski. Any other questions, comments about this one? Getting rid of words is always a good thing in a bylaw. This will also require a two-thirds vote to pass it. Article 29, all in favor, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. I declare two-thirds. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Article seven, special permits, Chapter 300. By the time we're done, you guys are all gonna know this article line by line. If the town will vote to amend zoning bylaws, Article seven, special permits, Chapter 300, Section 7.1A1, as follows. In item A1, change the word maximum, I'm sorry, maximum to minimum, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 30 has been moved and seconded as printed. Planning board report, please.
Yes, on May 7, the Plimpton Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing to discuss this warrant article. Following discussion, public comment was solicited, no public comment was received, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this proposed bylaw change at town meeting. So when you apply for a special permit, there are specific additional requirements that the Zoning Board of Appeals can place on you in order for you to be able to get your special permit for your special permit use. And as currently drafted, this bylaw, presumably from the original drafting of it, includes the sentence at 300-7.1A1. Essentially, the Zoning Board of Appeals, in determining your entitlement to a special permit, can require front, side, or rear yards greater than the maximum required by this bylaw. However, the bylaw does not require any maximum front, side, or rear yards. It requires minimum front, side, or rear yards. So you cannot have a building located within the minimum side yard that's currently required, or the minimum front yard, or the minimum rear yard, but you can have however big a maximum you want. This clearly is an error that no one has caught since 1967, and we would like to correct it going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Sobuleski. Article 30 has been moved and seconded. We heard the planning board report, it's required a two-thirds vote, seeing nobody coming up for comments. All in favor of Article 30, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. Uh, two-thirds, like, two-thirds. Article 31, and my kudos to the Review Committee for catching this after 60 years, 55 years. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton's zoning bylaws, Article five, intensity of use regulations, Chapter 300, Section 5.8E, as follows. In item A, delete the word "accessway" and replace it with "access area," or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 31 has been moved and seconded. Planning board report, please.
The Plimpton Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing on this warrant article on May 7, where the warrant article was discussed and public comment was solicited. Following public comment from the member of the Bylaw Review Committee that attended the public hearing, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. This is a cleanup, pure cleanup. Last year, we amended this section of the bylaw to create a defined term, capital A, "access," capital A, "area," and we amended it in every place, except we missed this one, and it should be corrected to match all the other references to "access area" contained in this section of the bylaw.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Sobuleski. Any other comments? I guess that's a little too quick on those, kudos. Anybody, any else, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 31, please raise your right hands. Downhands, opposed. It passes, uh, two-thirds. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Article 11, Definitions, Chapter 300, Section 11.1, by adding the following definition and inserting it alphabetically into its appropriate place in the existing list of definitions. Access area. With respect to retreat lots, the access area is the portion of the lot between the street and the point where the lot width equals 100 feet or more, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 32 has been moved and seconded. Planning Board report, please.
Yes, on May 7th, the Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing to discuss this warrant article. Following discussion and comment from the Bylaw Review Committee member who appeared at the public hearing, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. So this is the same situation as the first zoning article we discussed. When we amended and created this capital A access area definition, we did that in the retreat lot section of the bylaw, but we did not also include it in the definitions section at the back. The text of this definition is exactly the same as the text that is in the retreat lot section. It just puts the definition in two places. You can either see it in the retreat lot portion of the bylaw, or you can see it in the list of definitions that are in the back.
Thank you, Ms. Silvesky. Any other comments, questions? All in favor of Article 32, as printed in the warrant, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? I declare two-thirds. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws by adding the following new section, and further to authorize the town clerk to assign such numbering and to make non-substantive changes to the format of this bylaw in order that it may be in compliance with the numbering format of the version of the bylaws currently in effect. Every property owner shall display the house number as assigned by the Town Assessor's Office, using only numeric digits, not less than four inches tall, on the frame of the main entrance on the lockside, not less than four feet and not more than five feet above the door sill. The house number shall be in contrast with the color of the house. If the house sits 50 feet or more away from the street, the number shall be affixed to a post at a point at least four feet above ground level at the entrance to the property, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 33 has been moved and seconded. I'd like a Planning Board report, please.
Yes, on May 7th, the Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing to discuss this warrant article. Following discussion, public comment was solicited, no public comment was received, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. An explanation, so the Bylaw Review Committee has been soliciting requests, suggestions, ideas from the various departments in town as to ways that the bylaw can be improved. And one of the suggestions that came from the Fire Department was a more uniform system of numbering, additional numbering requirements. So the Bylaw Review Committee went out and looked at a number of different towns to see what other towns may require, how they might get future compliance with a numbering system like this to enable the Fire Department and Emergency Services to correctly identify a house number. This is taken from another town where it has been utilized very successfully and has been, you know, supported and adopted by the Fire Department. We ran this through with the chief, and she was in favor of it. The important thing about this is it's not just asking for a number on the house itself, but it's asking for a number closer to the road. Where you've got an instance like, for example, the houses that were developed on Mayflower Road, where it would be difficult, where there's one driveway coming in and then branching off into different locations, perhaps to identify which of the houses is the house that the Emergency Services are trying to go to. This is a zoning bylaw, so existing buildings are grandfathered. This is a proactive scenario. So if you are building a new house, this will apply to you. If you are, you know, making substantive alterations such that, you know, you trip a zoning requirement, this would apply to you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Silvesky. Any comments or questions about Article 34? Please come to the microphone.
Cheryl Duddy, 34 Maple Street, Fire Department. I do want to thank the Bylaw Committee for their hard work on this article. As stated, we are in support of this. Anything that can help us find houses faster can save us time in an emergency, and as already pointed out, it does not change if you go to sell your house for a 26F certification. There are no changes there. It's for new or fully renovated properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Silva, 24 Pulp's Farm. I support this article as written. I think it's a wonderful idea for public safety, as articulated by the chief. My only question is, does this apply to commercial and mercantile properties as well? Because it's specifically saying house numbers. It would be extremely helpful if commercial properties were somehow required to number in a similar fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Can the Bylaw Committee please address that?
I can respond to that. As drafted, it only applies to houses, but we can certainly come back next year with a supplement to add commercial properties to it.
Okay. That answer your question?
Yes, it does, but I guess my next question would be, would it be appropriate to amend this article this evening? Is that even possible, to include commercial in mercantile or not?
I don't think it would be, because the notice that was in the newspaper and posted for the public hearing didn't list commercial, and therefore, they wouldn't have had an opportunity to participate.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Okay, Article... Oh, yes, please.
Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street, and a member of the Plimpton, oh, a member of the Plimpton Zoning Board of Appeals. My question is that if, according to this bylaw, if a house sits at least 50 feet or more from a street or way, does the numbering have to occur on both the house itself and the post, which is usually a mailbox, or it's just the mailbox or the house? Or essentially, is it one or the other, or both?
Thank you, Mrs. Stiles.
As written, it would be both.
Thank you. Any other questions? Good questions. You're still reading this late, with this detail this late at night. I'm impressed. I'm sorry? Okay. Any other questions? None. All in favor, still two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 33, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? Two-thirds carries. Before we go to Article 34, I would love to entertain a motion that the moderator skip reading the entire article, just to give a very brief summary before turning it over to the board.
Mr. Moderator, I'm-
It's been moved and seconded. For me to skip reading these three pages, all in favor. Any comments? All in favor, raise your right hands. Downhands? Thank you. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to delete in its entirety, Chapter 300-6.4, Off-Street Parking, in Article 6, General Regulations, and replace it with the following language, Section 300-6.4, Off-Street Parking.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Article 34 has been moved and seconded as printed in the warrant. Planning Board report, please.
Yes, on May 7th, the Plimpton Planning Board held a duly noticed and published public hearing to discuss this warrant article. Following discussion, public comment was solicited. No public comment was made with respect to this warrant article at the Planning Board meeting, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. So a brief explanation of what this article does. There is currently a off-street parking section in the bylaw. This article updates and modifies that section in a couple of specific ways. It should be noted at the beginning that, per the text of the existing bylaw and per the text of the proposed bylaw, this does not apply to single-family houses, and it does not apply to commercial developments that are less than 800 square feet. Okay? So the first thing this does is it takes the table of parking space requirements, where it sets out, for this use, you need this number of parking spaces. For a restaurant, you need one space for every four seats. It does not change the number of parking spaces that are required for the uses from what is in the existing table. It does, however, delete uses that are no longer allowed in the town of Plimpton, because the table of uses was updated back in 2019, and those uses were not removed from this table. So, for example, hotel motel is no longer allowed in Plimpton, and we have removed the parking space requirement for hotel motel from this table. Otherwise, the computation is the same. The next thing it does is, under the current bylaw, at the bottom of the table of parking space requirements, is the following provision. C, additional requirements. One, ample additional parking space of appropriate dimensions. This takes that out of the bylaw, because that clause implies that someone can't rely on the table listed immediately above it to know what parking spaces are required. It presents the potential ad hoc determination by someone that a restaurant doesn't need one space for every four seats, it needs one space for every two seats. It's potentially subject to non-uniform applicability. It's potentially, you know, a question as to whether, you know, it could even be enforced, and so we've taken that out. That would be a benefit to any business that wants to develop, because now they will have clarity as to what the requirements actually are. Then, it maintains the existing requirements, but it updates them to include some more modern things that weren't included when this bylaw was originally drafted, and which are included in most of the other parking bylaws in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. For example, it says that we need to have crosswalks in a parking lot. It says that cars, parking lots cannot be designed so that cars back out of the parking lot into the traveled way. It requires landscaping in a parking lot, and stormwater management, and promotes the use of pervious surfaces as opposed to impervious surfaces. Providing additional pervious surfaces in a parking lot is better for everyone's groundwater, because it allows water to recharge back into the ground, filter through the ground, and therefore be available for people to extract through their wells. I will say that in the course of my career, I've permitted projects in 279 of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and what we are proposing is by no means more anti-business or restrictive than any of those other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvesky. Any other comments or questions on this article? Seeing none. All in, it's still two-thirds vote. Bylaw change. All in favor of Article 34, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? Two-thirds carries. And I may also like to just add that I really appreciate that the committee has given us not just the wording for the motion, but like, what it's really doing, what it's taking out and what it's putting in. I think that is helpful to all of us that are not fluent in the bylaws. Article 35, back to a simple majority vote. To see if the town will vote to adjourn this annual town meeting until 8:00 a.m. on May 18th, 2024, in the Plimpton Town House for the sole purpose of conducting the annual town election, and further that this annual town meeting warrant will be dissolved immediately upon the closing of the polls on that date. The polls will be open at 8:00 a.m. and shall be continuously open for voting until 6:00 p.m. to bring in their ballots for the following town officers. One selectman for three years, one board of assessor member for three years, one board of health member for three years, one finance committee member for three years, one library trustee for three years, one planning board member for five years, two Plimpton school committee members for three years, one Silver Lake Regional School committee member for three years, one town clerk for three years, and one tree warden for three years. We have a motion?
Still moved.
Article 35 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of Article 35, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed? We did it, folks. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.